All right, at six o'clock, we'll get started with the regular commission meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission, Tuesday, February the 18th of 2020. And at this time, I'm gonna ask Bedford to lead us in the pledge, and Robert, if you wouldn't do the invitation, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and with the will of our God, and justice for all.
Would that work in this break? Dear gracious God, we come to you tonight, Lord, so thankful for this blessed day that you've given us, we thank you for the opportunity to meet here. We ask that all decisions made here be beneficial to the members here present, and also the residents here in Mount Pleasant. We ask you to take much over us as we leave here tonight, keep us safe, ask all these things in your Son, Jesus' name.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, roll call, please, ladies.
Mr. Berry?
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Mr. Blankenship?
Here.
And Mr. Smith?
Here.
All present.
All right, number four. We've got two sets of minutes here, folks. We've got the regular study section, January the 16th, and then our regular meeting of the 21st. Right, you've had a minute, if you've not already reviewed them.
I've had a chance to look over the minutes, I'll make a motion that we accept the mess presented.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. You have a second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Orders, presentations, appointments, the mayor's appointments-
Did we give both minutes on that vote?
Yes.
Just make sure. Thank you.
Orders, presentations, or appointments, mayor's appointments, the Mount Pleasant Board of Zoning Appeals.
Mayor, this is Lisa Cole for a reappointment-
That's correct. She's currently serving, she is agreed to serve another term.
She's awesome.
Yeah. Fortune to have Lisa. And Mount Pleasant Communication Committee?
Yes, I am.
We have a new one, Fernando Cavalo, I said that right?
Yes.
And he has missed Blankenship's appointment, so that makes that committee completely full.
Good, good.
So those two can get approved, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, he is, he's big talker. All right, at this point in time, I'm gonna suspend, ask that we suspend the rules, please.
Do we get a vote on those two?
I'm sorry.
We need a vote on those two.
Yeah, we need it.
I make a motion that we approve both of the zoning-
Do we do it separately, the zoning and the- I think it's on a suspend the minutes, we're okay.
I make a motion that we approve both the mayor's appointment for the board of zoning and the communications committee.
I'll second that. We have a motion in a second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Hey, Corey. All right, here's where we're gonna suspend the rules, we've had a request from Mr. Brian Vick, he needs to get to a commission meeting, that we move 11A to 6A. I'll entertain a motion to do that.
I make a motion that we move it, since requested by Mr. Vick, to move 11A to 6A.
We have a motion, we have a second. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Vick?
Can you read what that is?
Yeah, it's ordinance 2020-1048, you can head up this way, too, if you want to. This is a first reading, it's an ordinance considering a recommendation from the Planning Commission regarding requested amendments Title 14, zoning and land use control, Chapter 2 zoning ordinance of Mount Pleasant Municipal Code, same being the zoning ordinance for the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, including municipal zoning map incorporated there.
Just to make sure that everybody heard that, that it's first reading, it'll be up for second reading until the March meeting.
Mr. Vick?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I appreciate if you guys would maybe send this back to Planning Commission to review. I would've done it under the R2 zoning, which would've made the Planning Commission feel a lot better, but it wouldn't, even with the subdivision of that property, it wouldn't fit in that zoning either. So I think that would be more appropriate for it, but it's still under the square footage per lot, it's at 15,000, I would have just a little over 13,000 per lot in that, and I think that would probably make the Planning Commission feel better about, you know, about not being such high density and having apartments on it and things like that. So I guess I would really need to take it back to them under that zoning, which would fit better, I just, I felt that, I was trying to make the zone for either one-
And this is the new zoning ordinance that passed?
Yes, correct. It wouldn't fit under either one, so I went to the one that obviously fitted, that's why I asked for that zoning, so.
Corey, do you wanna give some first on that?
Yeah, and commissioners, I sent y'all an email last week, we talked about the study section, but I've also printed that email, it's the relevant section of the zoning ordinance that's been handed out, so.
That's what you gave, you only gave just one?
Yes, so what's before you today, like we've talked about, is a request to rezone the property at 504 North Main from low-density residential to high-density residential. So that's what the Planning Commission voted to recommend that request to not happen. So that's what's before you today. This commission can go with the Planning Commission and approve their recommendation to deny the rezoning, or you can go against the Planning Commission by denying the recommendation and allowing the rezon. Or the third option that Mr. Vick is talking about, you can send this back to the Planning Commission for further consideration. If it goes back to the Planning Commission, you know, you can give up direction, or you could just say, I think y'all need to think about this again, but I think what he's asking is to set forth a different rezoning request?
I think that would be, it would, I mean, to me, I would've put it in R2 to begin with, but it still didn't meet the, you know, with two lots, it didn't meet minimum requirements for that. And, but, what I've got from the public and from the Planning Commission was, they were afraid that if we rezoned to an R3, that apartments and high-density stuff could go there. Well, you know, that wasn't my intentions, and I would've picked the R2 at that time, too, but it didn't, even just a straight 2, it wouldn't fit.
So I think-
So I was asking for the high to try to fit in the zoning requirements, and I don't, I mean-
I feel like Brian's a kind of, when you got an apartment complex, like beside him, but at the same time, like I said last week, you know, I don't know which way to go because of the historical.
Right.
And I don't, you know, I just don't wanna start something, and then you might be able to start it down the road.
And I know we've talked about this way too many times at this point, but there are, in that packet that I handed out, there's those four factors, and so that's-
That's what you have to consider.
That's what you have to consider, and I'd like you to consider them out loud, you know, in this public meeting, so that way-
In the minutes?
He knows, and the minutes, you know, is recorded for later on, of why you think this property should or should not be rezoned to high-density, which is what is before you, if you want to give him the opposite, back to the Planning Commission and give him the option to maybe amend his zoning request? That's a very new, I'm not sure if that's the right process for amending the rezoning request, 'cause he's actually asking for a different zone now.
Well, I'm not asking for another zone, I'm just saying that it would've fit better, to me, it would've fit better in that zone.
Here's where I've got a couple of questions, okay, Corey? Number one, what we're being proposed here tonight is what was not presented to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission was presented to have three homes on that lot, on that lot, and now we've got a change in the 11 and 2?
I did believe. Okay. Yes.
Okay. And you asked to go through here, and I did this today, I had to deal with you to take the time.
Okay.
And the amendment is in agreement with the land use plan for the area? No. There will be no adverse effect upon a joint and property owners unless such effect can be justified by the overwhelming public good or welfare. We had nobody speak for this, everybody spoke against it. No property owner, or small group of property owners, will benefit materially from the change to the detriment of the general public. Again, we had an overwhelming support here to turn this down in their area, and this will benefit materially a smaller group, where we had overwhelming support against it. Conditions affecting the area have changed to a sufficient extent to warrant an amendment to the area's land use plan and subsequent zoning matter. Now, somebody may wanna disagree with me on this one, and that would be fine, because that's what we're here for a meeting on. But I don't see area that's changed sufficient to the extent to warrant an amendment, and therefore are my answers to that's it.
I thought you only read three, I'm sorry.
I read four. So therefore, I'm just making my point clear in that what Corey has provided us, being our city attorney, we paid her for that. I'm not gonna go too far outside of what she's saying. Now, again, the thing that, the concern that I've got is, is you're now requesting something different than what you actually proposed to the Planning Commission.
Right, and so the site plan that he's talking about, you know, in abstract, it wasn't before the Planning Commission, it's not before y'all. So really, the only thing, the only thing that's significant to the vote, I think, would be if he wanted to amend his zoning request.
But my understanding of the zoning request that he's requiring 2 still does not need the zoning that is there now, it would still have to be amended, and even an M2 still would not have the square footage-
R2.
Of R2, I'm sorry, I'm not going to, I'm still thinking of something, R2. R2 still does not have the zoning, the square footage that we have, so that's sort of a new thing, too.
Well, that, we're getting into multiple differences.
That's what I'm saying, it would have to, it would have to go back, so what we're asking now is not, from my understanding, we have to go back, if we voted this down, I mean, and we voted in support of what the Planning Commission did, what's the timeframe to go back before then with another proposal?
A new request.
With a request.
Robert, do you know that anything?
With a new request, it would be just that, new request. Now, if he was to go back with the same request after it was voted down, then there's a time period-
One year later.
Yes, sir. But with a new request, he could submit the documents, and it would be just a new request, so that that time limit don't exist, to my knowledge.
Yeah.
With a new request, the time limit is null and void.
We've gotta make an action of what the Planning Commission did.
We have to take an action on it, yeah.
For this previous request, that has zero to do with the new requests.
That's correct, but what we're charged with doing right now-
Is only the original request.
That's correct.
Which I'm in agreement with you, Bill.
And I'll say this, that the submitted sketch flat was just for, it wasn't for, just to give an idea of what we were trying to do, it wasn't, that really wasn't in the, that didn't have to be displayed for a rezoning request either, is what, and I was just trying to explain, show, hey, here's a picture of what I'm wanting to do, so that really had nothing to do with the rezoning request.
Waiting another month is not gonna make or break the situation, we can hang the lottery, I think, to have to go back to the Planning Commission.
No, I mean, no, I just, I'm trying to make it, I'm trying to make it fit in the zoning you guys, that the city has, is what I'm basically trying to do.
From my understanding, too, that was Corey explained to us, that we have nothing to do that, we have to look at those four things-
Right.
And say, that's it, we either go from low-density to high-density, and that's it.
Correct.
In that case, then, I'm in support, too, of leaving it at low-density with that, because-
It doesn't, it doesn't require-
Yeah, and this is no reflection on Mr. Vick, or Mr. Robinett, who owns it, it's just a, we have no control of what happens to it from there. I mean, circumstances can change, and they decide to say, okay, it's not a good venture, and go to something else, and do that, and I, for one, don't wanna see that change into any higher density than it is of more than a two-family dwelling there to do, but that's my opinion, so, I mean, I'm just forcing my opinion there.
Well, this is, we need to bear this in mind, this is a first reading.
There's a public hearing followed.
There's a public hearing followed, and if there's a site plan revision or whatever between now and when the final reading is, and that's what-
A rezone request amendment, not a site plan.
What, yes.
Trying to get, keep our stuff in the right category, but-
But that's the way I, I mean, this is a first reading.
Just say, put it in writing.
Is that right?
Right. It gives him the time, it gives us the time then to do that, to put it in writing as to what it is, so we have that. And it's a public, the second hearing's a public hearing, right?
Correct.
Right.
March 17th, there'll be a public hearing.
And if it was to meet some of those requirements there, where those people who voiced their opinion against it, said, hey, this doesn't sound like such a bad idea, then that changes that focus, too, so.
Can I ask a legal question?
Absolutely, as much as you can.
Okay, so if Mr. Vick decides to pull the request, as it stands now from R1 to R3, and decides to go back for the Planning Commission's and R2-
Right.
Which would be a new rezoning request, during this interim between the first and second reading, if he pulls it, then, does it come back to the full commission?
I think it probably would still need to come back, but it wouldn't, you know, he wouldn't be wasting his time with it, neither would they.
Wouldn't be wasting his time.
Just make sure the way you-
And then it would be in the, from the Planning Commission in April, right? 'Cause we meet after the Planning Commission passes.
Yeah.
Right.
So there could technically be two on that meeting.
Yeah.
Correct.
For the same property.
Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, it does.
So what do we do from here?
Need to vote on the ordinance before you, so you have those three options, you can send the email exactly the words that you can approve.
And if you want to not vote that you don't know what's gonna happen in a month from now, that's fine, 'cause that hope can change, so.
Well, you can vote that you don't know what's gonna, I didn't understand that, I can vote that I don't know what's gonna happen, or we, do we still vote?
Well, I mean, if you vote to not go the way, or go the way-
We still have a special meaning, is what you're saying.
That's right, you're gonna have a public hearing, no matter what we do right now.
Regardless, yeah.
Then I can make a motion saying that, based on the information that we have right now, that we uphold what the Planning Commission has presented before us, based on this first reading.
There you go.
Does that make sense?
Yes, and we have a motion in a second, I'm gonna ask for a roll call of this, please.
Mr. Berry?
I'm gonna go on the Planning Commission. You're saying?
Mike Davis?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes.
And Mr., oh, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Those four are the four.
Maybe we got someone working, start.
Thanks for letting me jump on, appreciate that.
Yeah, glad to.
We'll see you.
You got a meeting to go to as well, thank you for what you're doing with that. All right, we're gonna go back to 6A, please. Ordinance 2040-1045, this is a public hearing and the final reading. An ordinance setting community center rental fees for the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, of which we have been provided the new events, and I'm sure Kate will be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, mainly this ordinance of 1045, it's addressing more of the East Hall, we had a lot of equipment there, and we were renting it out, and people were moving things around, which causes things to get broken and damaged, so that's basically what this is doing, and kinda getting us to where we need to be. I know that community center is really getting booked quite a bit, and it's been successful, and our biggest concern is it gets cleaned up after events, for the most part.
Absolutely, I'm in full agreement with it, we need to make sure, that facility costs us a lot of money to operate, and we need to be trying to gather back what we can of it, I appreciate how well you're trying to try to work with that.
We won't ever break even, but we can maybe get our utilities back.
So let's make sure of the things that we already have, though.
Yeah.
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Whoa, 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 you got a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, does anybody here like to speak on ordinance 2020-1045 concerning the community center rental fees? Please let the minutes show, there was no one to offer to speak, asked to speak. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion in favor of ordinance 2020-1045 for the rental fees.
Motion.
A second.
Have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. B, ordinance 2020-1046, again, this is a public hearing and the final reading. An ordinance to amend ordinance 2019-1037, said an ordinance appropriating its revenues and expenses of the operating, maintaining departmental functions of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, and ending June 30, 2020, providing an effective date. And Loretta has provided each of us in detail what that is.
Right, and you've all had it, Mayor, Commissioners, on this ordinance, you've had the changes that were made the first reading, and then some changes were made in the second reading, we'll do this budget amendment, and we'll do another one right before the year ends.
Right.
The changes that were made, and I'll let Loretta chime in, but we've made more money on selling our equipment that we get through the federal government than we thought, so that's a good thing, and then, as you know, we have not had a public works director, and we've been paying somebody as a consultant to be helping us with that, and that's the other changes as of today in front of you, the other stuff that you saw last week, but-
And again, what I said last month, or the other day, this year's just for the public
works director, not the other that you're planning on, or that we voted to raise, right?
That whole thing has.
I wanna make sure I understand it.
Ask it one more time.
You know, that's what I asked last month, and I wanted to-
Ask it one more time.
Had him voted, you know, for the public works director, which I was for there, but I was against, you know, raising everybody else's raises.
Okay, that has already passed.
So I know it's passed, and we talked about it.
There is no, there is no current employee getting a raise, I can tell you that, if that's what you're asking. No current employee is getting a raise with the passing of the salary, is that what you're asking at? Maybe, I'm sorry, maybe I heard you wrong.
Well, I guess, Bill, I apologize.
No, sir.
Commissioners, I apologize, but I'm still a little confused, 'cause I guess, I'd vote for, you know, the director, public works director, to get more money, but I'm not, and I know it's passed, but I'm not in favor of raising the other four jobs, you know, eventually raising them up to 80,000 or whatever.
But that's not, that's not worth it in front of you.
And that's what, okay, that's what, you know, that's what I asked last.
Yeah, that didn't happen.
I can tell you where, I'll tell you very quickly where the biggest numbers are. I talked to Loretta about this, and we're gonna make, and we didn't do anything wrong, okay?
Oh, no, no.
No, I'm talking about this year so far with our budget, okay? We had the unfortunate situation, we had a public work director leave us.
Right.
All right, we had the good fortune of having a Bobby Nutt that we could bring in under consulting fees, all right? So the biggest line items that we have so far are, number one, are directed to the public works, having to hire outside, and number two, and Loretta and Kate, I have talked about this pretty extensively over the last couple of weeks, is, we're gonna have, and we're gonna have to pay special attention to it when it comes to budget time this year, making sure that we're gonna do two here later, where we've gotta hire administrative services, and a lot of that's gonna fall over when we start this super problem, okay? So we need to make absolutely sure that we're looking ahead to understand that next year versus getting behind it a little bit. Now, the good news is, that's paid by our grants, okay? But it's still part of our budget.
Still part of budget amendment, yeah.
So we're gonna pay special attention to that as we work through this budget, making sure that we're going, okay, we know there's gonna be professional fees that are gonna be associated with this, and those fees can run up pretty quick. We just wanna make sure we keep our eye on the ball about what we see coming down the road related to it.
If I may, though, I think, and might correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what you were asking, too, under that, what we voted on, the thing to do, gave Kate the ability, when we hire somebody new, she can come before us and say, say, Loretta, God forbid, but if Loretta were to leave, and we had to hire a new finance director, we might have to offer a bigger salary for that, in that case, we had that, to put that in the budget to do that, that's what that amendment gave us.
And I think in the minutes that you all approved, I'm in the minutes saying that nobody currently is gonna be taking a break between now and budget time.
I think that's what Mike was asking, I may be wrong, but that's what I asked, too, at that meeting, and the only one back was the budget reflect, the public works director.
Okay, this is, again, a public hearing and final reading, please let the minutes show, anyone here would like to speak regarding this? Please let the minutes show there was no one, please, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we accept ordinance 2020-1046 as presented, for revenues and the amendments to our current operating budget.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. C, ordinance 2020-1047, again, this is a public hearing and final reading. An ordinance of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, amending Title 4, Chapter 6 of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code relating to travel rules, regulations, and procedures.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is simply us cleaning up our existing ordinance where we define travel, that it has to be overnight for a certain number of miles, before we're gonna give you a per diem.
All right. Anyone here like to speak regarding that? Please let the minutes reflect, no one wants to speak. Entertain a motion?
Make a motion we accept ordinance 2020-1047 as presented.
Have a motion, we have a second. We have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Monthly report from Mayor, I think I've talked enough already. Number eight, monthly financial budget report, Loretta?
Good evening, and that's, we got your finance report this week, if you looked at your revenue report and compared it to last year, you see that the revenue from the property tax was down like tremendously from this month, January, the January of last year. The biggest reason for that is in January of 2008, 2019, UST paid their bill at the end of January. Their bill is 399,000, right at four.
Eighty-nine, I noticed it earlier, just a minute.
And, no.
Send it back to them.
Yeah, we did, all the 20,000 is what the city got to retain of that.
Y'all understand that, right? Yes, I had some deals.
We'll get it eventually.
We'll get it, yeah, it's coming.
But we had to report it as a revenue, and then we reported then as a negative revenue, and the timing was off between this year and last year. Last year, they paid it at the very last week of January, this year, they paid it the first week of January. So if you compare your revenue for January for this year versus last year, it looks like, when I first saw it, I did something horribly wrong, I-
By March meeting, things should balance out.
Yes, and by March, things should balance. And today, I sent you a report of the property taxes, our new system has got some really good reports, and that's one that I think will be very beneficial for you to get, at least on an annual basis, of where the property taxes, the, how much we receive and when we received it, 'cause that report, I think, reflected the payments all the way from July all the way up to date, and I- from July all the way up to date. And I will also provide you those same reports next month after everything has been collected. Even notwithstanding, even if you discount the U S T timing difference, we're still a little off. We're still not quite where we were last year. But again, the.
They're not paid until the twenty eighth?
They got it until the twenty eighth.
They got it until the twenty ninth this year, though, at least.
Yeah, it's Saturday.
There you go.
So we are anticipating a couple of very busy weeks for our ladies up front. Yeah, it's going to be a very, the next couple of weeks are going to be very busy. Because again, they do have until the twenty eighth to get those paid. And I did compare the, what was billed with that report based on budget, and they are very close. It come within like thirty thousand of what we estimated. So that's, you know, that's pretty good.
How many grades have we collected?
Yeah, collecting it is, of course, that's always the issue there, but hopefully, we will, again, collect those in the next couple of weeks. Should be back at the park. So have any other questions?
All right. We need a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
We have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Monthly report from City Mayor?
Mayor Commissioners, I have just a few things in front of you. You all have a vote for the schools in front of you. And the Murray Alliance, Frank Hill, Mount Pleasant, Murrick County, they've all stepped forward in supporting this as what's on the ballot for March third, increasing the sales tax by half a penny. And the way it's been explained by the Mayor Ogles is it's an either-or. If this is not approved, you will have a property tax increase. I just want everybody to be aware of this. There is a campaign supporting it. If you look at the maps around us, I think the only one that doesn't have the same tail tax as us is Lawrence County. Everybody else is already at two point seven five. So it's point five that allows everybody that does business in our county to help pay for the funding of the schools. So this is actually coming quickly. By the time we meet again, it'll already be voted on. But just want you to see this in front of you. I don't know, Mayor, if you want to say anything about that at all. I just want to break to your attention, because we hadn't talked about that. This is just getting on social media now.
They, they asked, and I'll tell you straight up, they asked all the mayors to support it, which I do for schools. My concern is, we don't do something. We're going to wind up with tax bills running out right and left trying to fund these schools, because as much as we are growing, we're going to have to build some schools. We talked about a school that's probably going to be sooner rather than later. Here is the elementary school. It's on the list, which is good news, which means we're not being left out. As I said, we've worked hard enough to get a seat at the table. We're going to keep it. So therefore, that's the reason why I agree to support it, was very strictly because it is school-related hearing. And knowing what we got coming down the pipe. And I think over time.
Best to do it this way, and it is, because we're going to, Kelly don't have choice, the technical rate of property tax.
Just run it out.
Well, I can tell you, as a business owner, it's going to hit me hard, but as a property owner too, I would just assume it's going to everybody. And as a former teacher in here, you cannot believe what the schools need other than teacher salaries. We're always hearing teacher salaries, but look, supplies and school rooms.
It's coming.
You're going to get it one way or the other, so.
So that's, that's the reason. I just want everybody to know why I see my name signed on it. That's the reason you're going to see my name signed on it, is I feel like the school system, I think they're becoming more physically responsible every year. I noticed that they made a move again this year. But so let's just hope that they continue to keep their arm around the money.
Couple of things real quickly. Do want to make sure that everybody acknowledges the fact that we did have quite a bit of storm damage at the February fifth storm, mostly on people's personal property. And we've asked them if they feel it's the city's to blame, that they file a claim against the city. We have a new public works director, Keith McCafferty. He's not here tonight because he's meeting with staff at Public Works with Bobby Nut. I said, you're doing better being there than being here, and encouraged him to be there. And then, one final thing I want a little bit of feedback on is we are going to update our strategic plan, and we're using the services of MTS to do that. And just a real quick summary, would people rather do that from like four thirty to seven thirty on a weeknight or eight in the morning on a Saturday to eleven thirty twelve, which is the best part? Weekend?
Weeknight.
Weeknight, okay.
But I don't know.
All right, listen.
I was like, more of you two bankers.
Commissioner Graham, period. What about you?
I'm none.
Okay. Commissioner David?
Can you do four thirty on a weeknight?
Yeah, I mean, I can get out of there at four thirty.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I mean, before I might have to run the other child around.
Okay.
Mostly it's for ours, taxi.
We'll give her permission to do that.
All right. Sounds like, it sounded like an evening.
So we're just going to let it snow, what evening?
Yeah, we're going to probably have several agents choose from, but that's what I needed, that direction. Thank you. That's all I had.
That all you got? Thank you, Kate. That does not require a motion.
No.
All right. Any special reports from wastewater or gas?
Just to let you know that in your packet is, under wastewater liaison, you do have a monthly report from BART, giving you an update of where we are. And then, on the gas system, I want to put in the minutes that you did have a presentation by Jerry Foreman from TriStar, and I want to have that put in the minutes. I think that gave everybody a comfortable, including myself.
Yeah, I want to thank y'all for putting that together.
We're acknowledging that in the minutes that we have that, but that's all I had, Mayor.
Awesome. And that was a great presentation. Good to see it. Yes, it is. All right. New business. We've covered A, which was ordinance twenty twenty dash ten forty-eight as a request of the government earlier now. B, which is resolution twenty twenty dash three, City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, for engineering services for downtown, downtown infrastructure improvements.
So Mayor Commissioners, both B and C are about the downtown infrastructure. As you know, we got a T-DOT grant for a million two fifty, and in that, in that process, we have to hire an engineer, and we have to hire a grant minister. We've put bids in the paper, and those were responded to, and we received a bid for each, and basically, these resolutions. B is hiring an engineering firm, which is CT Consultants, which we've been doing business with, I think, for over ten years. And then, maybe I'm out of turn here, but C is basically approving downtown community development partners to administer the grant. So you're not expending money in that. You're basically awarding a bid.
Which we have agreed.
Yes.
All right.
Do we need separate?
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to do it separately. I didn't even get it, but they need to do it separately.
So I'll entertain a motion on twenty twenty dash three.
I'll make a motion for resolution twenty twenty dash three.
We have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Twenty twenty dash four, since we've already discussed it. Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept twenty twenty dash four through the administration of services for downtown.
All right. We have a motion, we have a second? Second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion carries. D, resolution twenty twenty dash five, a resolution by the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, declaring certain Mount Pleasant Infunditory and Surplus property and authorizing the sale of the property. And you should have been provided a copy of what they proposed to sell with values.
Basically, two vehicles within the police department and two vehicles within Public Works. And this is routine, is how we get rid of our excess surplus stock and do the resolution, and then it goes on gosdeals.com.
And again, before we vote on this, I'm sure the public did hear we're getting a little more of this last year this year than we did last, so.
Quite a bit.
So that's, that's good news for us. Thanks to all y'all doing it. Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion we accept resolution twenty twenty dash five as presented.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Don't put some wear on these vehicles, don't you?
Oh, yeah.
When we get rid of them, they're not running.
Sitting on the side of the road.
I just looked at original value, and I was like, no.
We drive them knocked up.
I know, but at least we can tell them that's true.
And hey, the good news is, what we're replacing with is cheaper to operate than what that is.
Better product, too.
It's a better product.
It is a better product, for sure.
So.
I'm sorry, Bill. I just.
We did get.
Yes, we did.
I'm making sure y'all got me confused now. All right. E, resolution twenty twenty dash six, a resolution of the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, requesting that the Tennessee General Assembly name the bridge at Highway six one sixty-six overpass after Jerry Frank Grimes.
Mayor Commissioners, we had this in front of us at the study session. I think this is kind of a new thing for this commission. We really haven't done this. So there were a few questions, I know.
My first one ever to hear of.
Is there anybody here?
I think there is. Harvey. Yeah. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, members of Mount Pleasant Commission. My name's Harvey Fisher. Longtime residence of Murray County, and like former Mayor Jim Bailey, I've known the Grimes family for over forty years. Like you said, fifty years. Jim's a little older than I am, so I've known him for a little over forty years.
We're going to tell you you said that.
That's all right. Truth is an absolute defense, right? But I really want to come and just speak on behalf of this request by the Tennessee General Assembly. I met with Representative Scott Sepicke. He is willing to, obviously, to carry the resolution if approved by this body, to name the, actually, it's not the Grimes, it's the Grimes Family Bridge. And the reason for that is that very seldom, and I have never, and I've been involved in government relations for many, many years, I've never known a request really for a family other than just an individual. A lot of times, we'll recognize a certain individual, whether it be a military person or someone who's a civic leader. But in this case, it would be my recommendation that we, that we use the naming as the Grimes Family Bridge, not just the, not just Mr. Grimes himself. And the reason for that is, when you look back, and I don't know if Mayor Bailey gave you all a summary of the contribution this family.
He did verbally, yeah.
Okay, has made, but you will not find a family that has made a greater contribution to not only the city, but to our, to our county, to the state, and to our nation. Mr. Grimes, their first son served, Michael served in the Army, was a military officer in the United States Army for ten years, returned home to Mount Pleasant and passed away a few years ago. Then Kathy Grimes, who is their oldest daughter, went to school, graduated from Mount Pleasant, went to school at Tennessee Tech, got a degree in civil engineering, went to work for the Army Corps of Engineers, and in two thousand and four volunteered to do a tour in Iraq with United States Army Corps of Engineers. And I know a lot about that. My son was in the First Marine Division in two thousand and four in Fallujah, Iraq. So I know a little bit about that environment where Kathy volunteered to go serve as a member of the Army Corps of Engineers. Tony Grimes, a lot of people refer to him as Anthony. I've known him for Tony Grimes. Tony Grimes defeated me many times in tennis over the years, and that's really how I came to know the Grimes family, is from tennis. But Tony grew up here in Mount Pleasant, went to Columbia State on a scholarship to play tennis there, and later got a scholarship, graduated from David Lipscomb University in Nashville, came back, taught school here, ended up as a assistant principal at Brentwood High School in Nashville. During that time, he was named T double S double A Coach of the Year for tennis. And then Melissa, the youngest one, also got a tennis scholarship with the Lipscomb University, came back. I didn't realize it, but came back and worked at Columbia State in the department there. Has made a tremendous contribution to this community, but to the state of Tennessee. Very active in her church in Nashville, was a member of the YMCA Board, the We Build People Project, which was, I was a former member of the YMCA Board here, and that was a big project. So it's not about recognizing an individual for this, it's about recognizing the family. They live there on Highway one sixty-six. If you're going from here in that direction, go over the bypass there. Their farm is down beyond the right-hand side, down just past.
By the church, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, across the creek.
I'd be happy to answer any questions. I, let me just say this as a disclaimer. I'm not representing, I'm not being paid by anybody to do this. I'm government relation. I've worked as a lobbyist for thirty years. I'm not here as a lobbyist. I'm not paid to do this. I'm here because I've known this family for many, many years, and they're just an outstanding, outstanding family. And I like to see them get recognized as a family for the contribution they've made, not only to the city here, but to our, to our counties, to the state, to the nation.
Mr. Fisher, I went to Kate today, because I've never done this before, and even though I've lived here since nineteen eighty-eight, I'm new to this thing of naming a bridge for somebody, and I think it's quite an honor. Would you mind if we deferred this to next month for this reason? I'd like to talk to some people in the community and get a feel for that, because it is quite an honor.
We can do that. If we do it, though, it would be next year before we could take it to the General Assembly, because tomorrow, according to Scott Sepicke's office, who I called to verify, for the resolution tomorrow is the cutoff date. So if that's, you know, if that's the will of the commission, then that would be understandable. But for us to get it in, the legislature does not stay there like they used to in Nashville. They get in and get out a lot quicker now, so.
Well, I'd like, the reasons I'd like to, it's quite an, I think it's quite an honor to have that done. I really think, I hate to use the word need, because that kind of dates me in my vocabulary of need.
I understand what you mean.
I think that's quite an honor for somebody.
Zeta.
To do that, and I really would like to, if we were, and I see no reason not to do it, to make it a community event, to do that and get the feeling and backing. I've found in this community, if you go out and make them feel a part of, then you have a whole lot of support.
And that's why.
And I don't want it to be a negative thing, where somebody says, well, we weren't asking. Why wasn't it my family that was done that, which I see a lot of in this.
You go make a motion.
Yeah. So I'd like to make a motion, if it's okay.
And that's the reason.
I want y'all to have some further questions.
And that's the reason, I will say, Commissioner, that's the reason I wanted to come here, rather than just going to the General Assembly, because the General Assembly can, they can name a bridge. That's a, that's a state highway, and they can, they can name it whatever, Billy Bob Bridge, if they want to. I just think this is an opportunity to recognize someone from this area, someone who lived out there, their farm was there, and that was the reason. I felt that was not the proper thing to do, that I contacted, that's why I contacted Mr. Bailey.
Well, if we did it and did that and made that motion to do that and got that, because I personally am going to ask, would ask people to do that, and got it, that we still could do it and put it on the assembly, even though it would be for next year.
Be for next, be for January of twenty twenty-one, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and we'll do it. I would like to put that in.
I know that Mayor Bailey did say that they want the city's recommendation.
I'll tell you, Scott came to me and said, look, we got a timing issue. And I went, whoa, 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 whoa. I'm sorry, but I think this is going to require more time. I mean, we got this today, we're wanting to do it, because it's got to be done tomorrow.
Right.
I'm going to be just like Dolores was. I want to do some reading on this.
Sure. I understand.
This is the first one I've ever seen in my life. Although the General Assembly does have the right to do that, I can tell you, they're not going to do it without the city's recommendation. I was told that point blank, without the city writing a letter saying that we're not.
That makes me feel good, knowing that.
Yeah.
Well, I was impressed with the information. Don't get me wrong with that. I just would like to have, as I said, so.
And I completely agree. I was not aware, I really thought we had more time than this, and Scott, Representative Sepicke's office called, said, hey, we've got to have something pretty quick. And I completely agree with you. I'm not for, if somebody tells me I got to have it tomorrow, that's a red flag for me.
Yeah, I understand.
Waving that flag.
Does anybody have any other questions? Well, I'd like to make a motion that we table this to next.
Defer.
Defer, not table, excuse me. Wrong word. Yes, table means, defer this to next month. Thank you. Defer this to next month and bring it up again, and bring back some additional information after one will have some. But defer this to next month's meeting, and study session too, so we can discuss it.
All right.
So that's time, you think? Because you're not, you're not talking, now you're talking about January of next year. So if you feel like you need more time. Time is not obvious.
We'll do this in ninety days, and that way, we're not pushed up.
All right, what's that, ninety days?
We can't do it until January twenty-one.
Okay, ninety days. That's it.
Okay, ninety days, okay.
All right, we have a motion to defer this for ninety days, we have a second?
If you don't mind, I'm going to call that July. Hold that, the July meeting?
Whatever you got to do.
So it'll be June?
Yeah, we'll have that done.
Yeah, get the budget out of there.
All right, we have a motion to defer this until July.
Yeah.
Can we have a second?
I second it.
Can we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
All right, we have one person signed up for general comments from the citizens, Mr. Jason Reason. I think Jason actually wants to speak on a couple of things, maybe?
Yeah.
Come on forward and give us your name, Jason, and your address, please.
I'll try not to take up-
Oh, we know, we're following protocol.
I'll try not to take up as much time as I can.
Yeah.
So, Jason Reason, 501 North Ellen Street, here in Mount Pleasant. So, Mayor, Commissioners, we have a cat problem in this city.
Amen.
The city has no policy to manage the cat, especially feral cat population, and I've recently been made aware that County Animal Control is unable to help for various reasons. We have enough trouble with residents not being responsible with their dogs, and there's little to nothing our police can even do for that. So here it is, what are we going to do with the cat?
Feed them.
I don't know what to do, I'm being honest with you, Jason, because it's, the city does not have an animal control department.
Right.
And to do that, we're going to have to go hire another, go buy that dog, he's got that cage on the back.
Yeah.
And then-
I'm sure that's-
In the housing area.
And, yeah, then where are we going to take them without it?
I don't know what the answer is either, it varies a lot, I mean, quite frankly, it happens to pop up behind the bank on a regular basis, and I feel like, you know, you're being dropped off.
It's like, they weren't there the other day, and now they're there, you know? But you know, I did see this, it is a little bit interesting and ironic, I noticed in the paper, I was catching up over the weekend, and there was a new cat house at the, well, what they called it, was a cat house, I saw it, too, I said, "I think I chose a different word," and they did. I saw that picture. There's a new cat house at the Animal Control, Murray County Animal Control, all over the page, I mean, it's a nice, big, nice new room.
Okay, I mean, are they-
So you think they're pushing it being-
They were doing for adoption, I'll tell you what I do at that, because they drop them off on our road all the time.
You got to haul them off.
And I have two cages, and we put ours up, we have three of them, I put ours up for the evening, put cat food in them, catch them, and take them, unless I know who they are, and I warn my neighbors, and I'll find who they are, and we take them, and I just take them to-
Pretty much, well, that's what you're trying to do.
Yeah.
Now, if you know that you have a group of cats, this past, we had twenty-five over there at Uta Raisin Road in North Main Street, Eve, Eve something, I can't remember the name.
Yeah, but she had them.
She'll pick them up, she will re, she will-
She made several trips.
She will pick them up, and she will not kill them, she will make sure that they go to somebody.
Yeah, but she also lets them run loose while she has them.
As long as they're not at Mount Pleasant, they're okay.
She doesn't keep them in the house.
They're taken out of state limits, so.
Well, I know, I know people out in the countryside are also complaining.
We have, we're-
Jay, where?
Yeah. We don't have anything to address that, and the Animal Control in Murray County wants to get Columbia and Mount Pleasant to contribute money to them, but they have not told us what services we would provide.
Right.
What we would get in exchange for that, so that is probably forthcoming.
Well, I got some dogs coming loose out of where I live.
And we can't help you, yeah.
And I called a trapper, and a trapper, he was probably just a lot.
It was a dog, they told me if I catch a dog, they'll come get it.
A dog, a cat, or whatever, they keep, they keep tracks.
Wild animal only.
Is that a legal issue? I mean, if there's dogs on my property that don't belong to me, I mean, I can catch them if I want to.
Well, you can, yes.
But they can't. But they can't, but I can, a trapper can.
I mean, I, there's a, there's a lot I don't know about how all that works and everything.
It's all right.
My concern is, it's, I mean, I've got them in my yard, and it's really annoying, and-
It's real.
You know, without a plan in place, it kind of just looks like it's up to each individual resident, if they see a bit.
It works well, it works well. You got a leash on them, you can force them.
And when the feedback I gave to Jason was, maybe it's more of education of nurturing your animals, but it never stops, it seemed like.
I mean, and if people aren't taking responsibility for that, that's all they're doing is feeding wild cats.
Well, there's babies that show up, too, because the cats were dropped off behind the bank, eventually had babies, that's the-
We call all the ones with the ball, we call six.
Somebody's taken a couple of the babies, the two babies are left, they're getting big.
And it became three.
They need to raise.
Two cats, one baby.
And it came, it became three.
They spend enough time on cats.
Okay, sorry about that, um, okay.
With no answer, I'm sorry, Jason, other than there's a new cat house.
There's a few things that I wasn't aware of, I wasn't aware that Animal Control's had a cat house and stuff, maybe there's a potential for something, a resolution soon, but I told some people I'd bring it up, and you're answered. Okay, so the second matter, last year, the planning commission, or, sorry, the commission passed a social media policy for the city employees, and prior to its passing, the city's Facebook page was a resource for information about the city, even if it may sometimes have been construed as biased or even controversial. And I don't actually know the contents of this policy, but since the policy was instated, communication from the city via social media has sharply declined. Each of the commissioners and many of the city staff have expressed their distaste for social media at one point or another, and believe me, I know there are many, many problems with social media. However, the fact is, we live in a society that does use it extensively despite its problems. It's part of the information flow that happens all around us, and even if folks aren't using social media, they are using the internet, websites, email, etc. In the absence of information, people will make up stories of their own, they'll find someone with some illusion of authority to latch on to for information. I witnessed this last week at the planning commission meeting. And in a small town, rumors and gossip abound, on social media, rumors and gossip abound. You know, my wife, Nicole, and I lead a Facebook group called Hit Mount Pleasant, and we work hard to get good information out there to try to dispel rumors, but we can't reach everyone, and we can't do it all ourselves. And to be fair, the city does have some communication on social media, the website and through texts, but they're sporadic, inconsistent, sometimes missing information, and generally lacking protection. So my point here is to urge the city to consider taking some steps to improve the efforts to disseminate information via digital resources. I know that he is planning for next year's budget, I'd like to propose to you all that it would be worthwhile to consider hiring somebody, at least part-time, whose dedicated role would be to manage digital public communication through social media, et cetera. And if it matters at all, I have a fairly detailed list of things that I think the public needs to see from the city, if they're interested, but thank you.
So Mayor, just for the Communications Committee, so-
Yes.
Which I'm on.
So see, all that, you know, so you may have to take your approach.
I'm well aware that the committee is not there to be an advisory board, which is why I'm bringing this here, right, before you all are right now. And, I mean, even among members of the Communications Committee, there's still a distaste for social media, but I'm aware that it's just one of those things that's out there. And just as an example, before the Planning Commission meeting, a post was made highlighting the details, the discussion points of the agenda. That's good, solid information, legal information, it's important to have. I don't understand why there, that, why that isn't posted for every single meeting, every single month.
And that's a great point, Mayor Fisher, we don't have the personnel, but, great segue, because in our budget meeting, we are going to be proposing turning a position into an IT Director position, that we'll have more time to devote to that. And when we passed, when we passed the ordinance, basically, on how we're going to handle social media back in August, I believe it was, is we placed all of our communication on our website, that is the one place that we can say, "That is truthful information that's going out there." But we also had to take, a lot of us that were able to post on Facebook, that had our personal Facebook pages on there, off, because it shouldn't be personal to me or anybody else that posts there.
Right.
And once it becomes a work site, that's a different site you have to go to, more time, more effort, and it has definitely gone down, I know it has for me, but that's why, but we are going to be proposing to the commission in our May meeting, that we make a position, full-time IT, and it's, that position's going to be very, very busy, and that would be part of the one, part of what they would handle.
Okay.
Good topic, yes.
I did not tell them to come here and say this.
This has lived, that's the case.
This has been stuff that my wife and I, and honestly, part of people in the community have been talking about for a while, even if, I don't always agree with some of those people on many things, but, I mean, as an example, talking about things being moved to the website, I, this last Wednesday, I went and met the new business owner over at Site Southern, right here on the square, and welcomed her, and we talked about her business and Mount Pleasant, she asked what was going on in the evenings, that there were all these cars. Well, the previous evening had been the Planning Commission meeting, a lot of people showed up, and she was asking where she could find out about these. So I referred her to the city website, went to the calendar, and I know you can't see this, but there's literally one thing on the calendar for this month, and it's this meeting. That was embarrassing for me, but even more, it's embarrassing for the city. I mean, this is the stuff that people are able to Google and just find, and, I mean, it's not like we don't know, but meetings are coming up every month.
And then, I appreciate you bringing it up, because, especially since you and your wife do such a good job of helping us with getting information out there, it is, an employee has to dedicate time to do that, and we don't have that.
We don't have it right now.
Yeah.
So, and I know it's-
I think, I'm not a big social media user, as I've told you, I think, y'all don't want to know my opinion of it, some people try to hide behind the screen, and I don't agree with that, and I don't have time for that.
There is a lot of that.
I'm more about the facts. We are looking at it, Jason, and I know it's a need, but, I don't know how to say this right now.
There's room for improvement.
There's a lot of room for improvement there, and frankly, over the last year and a half, we've been having to knock the big birds out first.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And we'll get this addressed.